Good morning, everyone. This the Wednesday, April 6, 2022, regular meeting of the NAGS Headboard of Commissioners. It's hereby called to order. I know that Commissioner Sanders is excused this morning. If you will please join me in a moment of silence. I know we're all thinking about Ukraine here, and it's worth a few minutes of contemplation and even prayer. Now, if you'll please stand as you're able to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I move to adopt the agenda with removal of Item 4 from the consent agenda for further clarification.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second?
Say.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. That will bring us to our recognitions, and I'll first call Eric to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Members, Board of Commissioners, I want to welcome David Pickens. He's our part-time Bulkyard attendant. So if you've had the pleasure of stopping by the Bulkyard since David started, you'll know he's a true people person. With being one of the most forward-facing positions that we have in the town, David's already creating relationships in the short time he's been there, and he's done a tremendous job at that. He spent his career in Newport New Shipyard welding, cutting, and fabricating metal products, where he retired in 2015 after a 35-year career. Once family convinced him to move to the Outer Banks, he kept himself busy as a welder for Catman Cats in Wanchies, and more recently as a landscape crew leader at Distinctive Landscape Modeling in Karahla. We're thrilled to have David as a part of our Public Services team, and as you can see, he brings a lot of experience with him in a lot of key areas that we need in public works as far as welding and that sort of thing. So I think the sky's the limit with David. So please help me welcome David.
Welcome aboard.
How you doing? Same here.
Nice to have you. Thanks, David. Welcome to town.
How you doing?
Excellent.
Yes, sir. Back to work.
Back to work. Very good. Thank you. Love it. Thank you. All right. Eric?
Yeah, so next, yeah, it's Public Services Day. So we have, next we got Logan Cuthill. Like I said before, the unsung heroes of the town are those that come in and get their work done by the time most people are just coming or going to lunch every day. So that's what Logan does. He's joining our team and learning our residential routes and sanitation just ahead of the peak season. So at a key time that we have for Public Services, he's jumping on board and learning those routes. Logan served as a vehicle mechanic for the Army Reserve for six years. Logan spent a lot of time in the Outer Banks over the past 15 years, but has called this place home for the last seven. Logan has a six-year-old son, Liam, and enjoys martial arts. I've had the opportunity to have a number of conversations with Logan since he started, and he really does have that can-do, positive work ethic that we're looking for in public work. So again, I think he's going to be a tremendous addition to our team.
Very good. Good morning. The next item is recognition for years of service and Chief Wells.
Good morning, Mayor Kahoon and distinguished commissioners. It's my pleasure to bring before you for recognition firefighter Scott Hooper. Scott started volunteering for NAGS Head Fire Department in 2010, and on April 3, 2017, Scott began working full-time for the town as a firefighter. Scott has constantly sought to improve himself. He's got his South, or his North Carolina Emergency Medical Technician and his Child's Safety Seat Technician. Scott has recently completed his Fire Inspector One course and is preparing for his North Carolina State Fire Inspector exam. He has also worked diligently to become our next engineer. Scott is a caring and compassionate person to work with. He truly wants the best for his fellow employees. He has been a trustee on our firefighters relief board for nine years. On this board, Scott actively finds ways to support and protect the welfare of his fellow firefighters. Scott's participation on this board has resulted in scholarships for firefighters and their family members, and the implementation of a cancer insurance program for our firefighters. He has proven himself to be an excellent firefighter. He has the respect of his supervisors and peers. Scott lives in Granny with his spouse Jamie. Together, they are raising a 13-year-old daughter, Michaela. They also have three dogs, Lola, Milo, and Maxie, which are very much part of their family. In what little time Scott has, he likes to spend his time on the beach surfing or snorkeling. He also enjoys camping and playing the guitar. Scott is a shining example of what it means to be a member of NAGS Head Fire Rescue. He serves our citizens and visitors with courage, commitment, and compassion. Distinguished Board, I present to you Scott Hooper.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is another recognition for years of service, and I'll call Chief Webster.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to recognize Sergeant Chase Tadlock for his 15 years of service to the town of NAGS Head. Chase began his career with the department on December 18, 2006. Prior to coming on board, he attended Mayland Community College for basic law enforcement training. He began his law enforcement career as a deputy with Avery County Sheriff's Office, and then as a police officer with Newland Police Department. Chase excelled as a patrol officer for us, and he was promoted to the rank of sergeant in January of 2015. Chase cares deeply about his officers and works hard to uphold the standards set by the department. Chase is married to his wife Vanessa, and he is the proud father of five children. In his off time, he enjoys hunting, fishing, spending time with his family, and chasing his Drummond Short Hair pointer around. And I tell you, Chase is one of those guys that I go too often to talk to, and I really value his insight and his opinion. And just a lot of thanks, Chase. Thank you.
Bruce, appreciate you, sir.
Thank you very much. 15 years. Congratulations.
All right, Charlie? Come on. 25 years is quite an accomplishment, so I want to, you know, what can I say about Charlie that his rap sheet doesn't already tell? So, no, no, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Charlie was born and raised in Roanoke Island and worked several independent garages until coming to work for the town of NAGS Head in 97. He took over the position as Fleet Mechanics Superintendent from Thurman Cart Ride in 2006. Charlie has two sons, Jeff and Thomas. Jeff and his wife Carrie live in Utah with their son Kane and Luke, and Thomas lives in Durham, North Carolina. Charlie enjoys drag racing, visiting with friends and family, cooking, coaching baseball for nine- and 10-year-old boys, and learning how things work. I've really enjoyed getting the opportunity to work and get to know Charlie over the course of the last year. He's a genuine person that cares about this town, cares about what his crew does. In the very first time that I met Charlie, I came here for my second interview. There was a barbecue down at Public Services, and Charlie did some, he smoked pork shoulder, and we had quite a few conversations about barbecue, so I knew we were going to get along just well. He's a tremendous resource for the town, and we're lucky to have him working for us and committed his career to the town of NAGS Head for the last quarter century. Thank you, Charlie, for what you do for the department, the employees of the town, and the citizens of NAGS Head.
I'm going to ask Charlie to stay up here for a minute and ask the Board to come around so that we can get a photograph as we do with those with such extended service. So Charlie, if you'll stay up here, please.
Charlie, we have a small token of appreciation for you, engraved tie tag.
And we have a certificate of appreciation presented to Charlie Glidden upon the occasion of his 25th anniversary. On March 24, 1997, you began employment with the town of NAGS Head. You're hereby honored and recognized for 25 years of dedicated service to the citizens of the town. With your unremitting devotion to duties as Fleet Maintenance Superintendent and the Public Services Department, your fateful services had a valuable effect on the well-being of the town, and you deserve this recognition. The town of NAGS Head Board of Commissioners express their sincere admiration and appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty in the past and extends its best wishes for continued success and many more productive years with the town.
NAGS Head is very fortunate to have employees like Charlie and to be a place where people want to work for that long. Next on the agenda are two proclamations. The first is for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Child Abuse Prevention Month and April 2022 proclamation. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable asset, and whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable nurturing homes and communities, they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of the life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development and resources that they need to cope with the stress and to nurture their children to ensure that all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, we, the Town of NAGS Head Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. This the sixth day of September, sixth day of April 2022, pardon me. Having heard the proclamation, a motion would be in order?
Say move.
I have a motion and a second to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next proclamation is for Fair Housing Month, and I know that there are those in the audience who wish to speak to this, and so that rather than engage them in the regular public comment where we have a fair number of speakers apparently, I'm going to ask that they come up now at this time. So either Doug or Willow, if you would like to speak to this fair housing proclamation.
I have my glasses so I can see what I'm doing here. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Doug Brenly. I'm the president of the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. The association now has over 1,200 members in residential and commercial sales, property management, as well as lenders, insurers, appraisers, inspectors, and other affiliate members. With me today is Will O'Kelly, our CEO of O'Barr, Porter Graham, our Government Affairs Director, and Jimmy Anderson, our head of our task force for diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Board recently approved several initiatives set forth in our DEI Task Force on Fair Housing and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and that's why I'm here today. We would like to present you with a few copies of the National Association Biannual Magazine called On Common Ground. This latest issue focused on addressing the housing shortage and affordable housing issues, that which we are all in the Outer Banks very familiar with. I'd like to make you also aware that April 11 this year marks the 54th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. The Outer Banks Association of Realtors is committed to ensuring that all prospective homebuyers, sellers, and tenants are treated fairly and equitably without discrimination. To further bring attention to fair housing, we ask you to join us in proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month. You should all have a copy of this proclamation, but I'm going to go ahead and read it, because that's what we do up here, right? Fair Housing Month proclamation. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11, 1968, enshrined in the federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States, and whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familiar status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas Dow County is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, environment are strengthened in diverse inclusive communities, and whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated, and whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of NAGS Head hereby declare the month of April 2022 as Fair Housing Month. NAGS Head is an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for fair housing opportunities for all residents, prospective residents of NAGS Head.
Thank you, sir. And Board, having heard that with the third whereas reading that the town of NAGS Head is committed to the mission and intent for fair housing opportunities for all, then a motion would be in order to adopt the proclamation.
Say move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much for bringing this to us today. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and I will turn this over to Mr. Leidy with the note that I will start by reading some letters that have been emailed to us and on a similar topic that I expect most of the speakers are here for.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you begin, let me give the introduction for the public comment period. The Board of Commissioners invites the public at every regular meeting to provide comment to the Board. This is not an opportunity for dialogue because the Board rarely responds to public comment, but it is an opportunity for people to share the concerns or interests that they have with the Board. We ask that the comments be addressed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members of the Board. In addition, if, for anyone who is here to provide comment on either of the public hearings that we have scheduled on the agenda today, you should reserve your comment until that public hearing. But to begin the public comment session, we'll let the mayor read the letters that he has received, and then after that, I'll open it to people from the floor to approach the podium and provide comment.
Thank you. The first is from Jim Arnold. To whom it may concern, I have lived off Soundside Road since 2018. In that timeframe, me and my family have been a witness to the increasing amount of traffic in our neighborhood. My first concern is the safety of my wife and my little children. I can't even count the number of occasions we have experienced unsafe walking conditions due to traffic jams, speeding, and miscellaneous activities occurring off Soundside Road. In the summer of 2020, my little girl, about 10 feet ahead of me, was the victim of a man who was by himself in a truck with out-of-state plates pulled over on the side of the road off Soundside trying to entice my daughter to get into his vehicle with necklaces. We called the police and reported the incident. Again, in 2021, we were on the front porch of our home with our children playing out front when a speeding out-of-state vehicle ran into our mailbox and took off. Once again, we reported the incident to the police. We do not allow our five-year-old daughter to come home from school on the bus in the afternoons due to uncontrolled traffic, and it's really sad, due to traffic concerns, she can only ride the school bus to school. We also no longer allow our children to play freely in our front yard due to the continuous unsafe events that have occurred by allowing the increased number of visitors to enter Jockeys Ridge State Park through our neighborhood off Soundside Road. I beg you to think of the large number of children and animals that reside off Soundside Road and think of their safety. Sincerely, Jim Arnold. This next is from Hillary Ball. Dear Town of NAGS Head, the brevity of this email should in no way represent my lightness of feelings for this issue, quite the contrary, but I recognize that all of us have full plates and busy agendas, and so I will try to be succinct. We have lived on Soundside Road for five years now. I've been a user of Jockeys Ridge State Park for 23 years. I have witnessed the changes of the neighborhood and the park and the natural resource gradually over the past 20 years, and then drastically over the past two. The increased visitation of the park is apparent in parking woes, over-usage of the beach, and traffic safety concerns, the last being the breaking point of frustration for our family. With two young boys, aged one and three, we spend most of our days outdoors. I walk our neighborhood in the morning and in the evening with our dog, and walk down to the park daily in the summer with the boys. Last summer, I was nearly hit two distinct times despite the fact that I religiously walk on the left side facing traffic. However, with a steady stream of traffic in both directions during the peak hours, cars will often play chicken, bless you, and trying to speed past you before the other car arrives from the other direction. More often than not, I end up pushing the stroller or pulling the wagon or encouraging my son to ride his bike in the grass or ditch through the sand spurs and cacti because it is better to off-road than be hit on the road. I don't have a solution. I know most of the problems stem from the fact that Jockeys Ridge is really the only Soundside Beach in the entire Outer Banks community. I know that inside the park is under jurisdiction of the state, so there are problems that the town cannot single-handedly solve. I know that the road is largely at the mercy of DOT. Despite all of these oppositions, I'm asking that you please consider trying to find a solution for our neighborhood. We are not the only family with kids at this point. Our children deserve to be able to go out for a bike ride or a walk without getting scared or jostled off the road in near misses. Perhaps a reduction in speed could be considered. Make the whole road 15? Then perhaps cars will only go 25? Because I assure you, speeding and erratic driving is rampant, especially after visitors have arrived to find the parking lot full and speed away looking for Plan B, perhaps a sign at the start of the road advertising a residential community and kids at play. Like I said, I don't have a solution. I would be happy to discuss ideas. I would be happy for any attempts to resolve this situation. I would be grateful if our leadership were able to come to a solution in the threat of safety. Most sincerely, Hilarious Hillary Ball. The next is from Karen Reader. Dear Board of Commissioners, due to the NAGS Head Commissioners meetings being held during business hours, I'm unable to attend due to work, so I'm asking for this to be read on my behalf. A majority of what I am discussing in this letter is repetitive due to the continued safety concerns that still exist on Soundside Road, to which I have been presenting for the last two-plus years. For this reason, I had a meeting with Eric Clausen and Chief Webster at the end of January. The timing of this meeting was in part to hopefully come up with some solutions prior to the tourist season being in full swing. Now that we are in the first week of April, volume is already climbing. The following recommendations, in part or in full, are a few pulled from the Soundside Access Working Group memorandum dated March 25, 2021, that were unanimously accepted by the Board in April of 2021. One, the town should explore the feasibility and appropriateness of other traffic calming measures along West Soundside Road that would physically limit or discourage the ability to speed, such as a chicane or other measure. Two, that events held at the access after open hours shall not utilize West Soundside Road for access, and that the town be notified of scheduled events. Three, that the town should seek out and promote alternative sound accesses in other town locations for the general public and for education and recreation groups. The town should strongly encourage and support efforts by North Carolina State Parks to develop a separate sound access facility at Jockeys Ridge State Park that addresses current demand, which is accessed internally within the park. Four, the town should commit to continued coordination between its police department and park rangers, performing routine visits to the Soundside Access when open, including supervision of the beach and water during the season. Presented with the safety facts involving Soundside Road, Eric and Chief Webster agreed that decreasing the speed limit and adding a choker would be beneficial to increase safety. Soundside Road, which was established prior to the incorporation of the Town of NAGS Head, is a narrow straight roadway that has been turned into a raceway due to the current Soundside Access exposure. My family has been on this property since the early 1950s and can no longer live without worry of being hit or striking a pedestrian to just leave our driveway. With the Board's agreement to decrease speed and add sidewalks in the village, Soundside Road has a significantly higher risk to pedestrian safety in comparison. All of the above issues could be resolved with no more expense to the Town of NAGS Head or my tax dollars going to a facility that endangers my family and fellow neighbors. The resolution would be to close the Soundside Access to vehicular traffic. The state should access their property through their gate entrance and make use of their large parking lot and visitor center. NAGS Head Police Department does not have staffing sufficient to control the multitude of safety concerns that the Soundside Access poses in allowing vehicular traffic. Thank you, Karen Reader. And one more, which is from Carol Hoffman. As discussion continues about the state's desired plans to make their Soundside Beach at Jockeys Ridge more accessible to the public, please consider the following. Water pollution is a continuing problem in this area. For several years, signs have been posted on the beach warning the public of contaminated water unsafe for swimming. What is causing the contamination? This beach is especially popular for people with small children because the gentle sound waves allow youngsters to safely swim and ride floats. However, when the water is polluted, it is especially dangerous to these young children. How will the water be affected by the number of people intended to be bussed into this very small beach area? Will the water be any safer? Will the beach area, the sand, be extended to the north to accommodate additional beachgoers? There's hardly any room for more beachgoers on this little beach now. Is there a way to cut through another part of Jockeys Ridge to create another beach area, possibly closer to the main entrance of the Jockeys Ridge parking lot? Where will buses turn around to return after drop-offs? Will a traffic light be installed at Soundside and the bypass? Or will the buses go up Deering to the light at the post office? Using that route would create the same problem you helped us resolve when the 17 new homes were being considered, as it was decided Deering is not safe for large vehicles and not wide enough for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Thank you for your continuing efforts to support our wonderful NAGS Head community. Sincerely, Carol Hoffman, a South Ridge resident. Mr. Leidy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So with that, at this time, members of the public are welcome to engage in public comment. If you will please start by going to the podium, telling us your name and where you live, and then address your comments to the Board, and I will be keeping time, and I'll let you know when your time is, when your five minutes is just about up.
Can we approach the Board and review the presentation? I'd prefer that you went to the podium and passed it down if you have material for us. Thank you.
My name is Cabot Gavin, and Melody and I live on 403 West Deering in Southridge. Mayor, Town Manager, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns on the Jockeys Ridge State Park study concept. We are all aware that this is the most popular state park in North Carolina. Melody and I have been homeowners in Southridge since September 2001. We love the fellowship of our neighborhood and do not take for granted how blessed we are to share this experience with our family, including six grandchildren. However, we feel the proposal disregards public safety. I am the Safety Manager, International Paper's Frank Lemille, and one of my many responsibilities is annual review of traffic flow risk assessments. TIFR's primary objective is to minimize the interaction of vehicular traffic and pedestrians. This can be achieved by many options, such as hard barriers, such as concrete jersey walls, metal guardrails, directional traffic flow, established walkways, eliminating one from the specific location. This proposal only recommends directional flow and speed bumps, which has not separated any interaction. This proposal at Nagshead is providing no improvements to West Deering or Soundside Road. The town installed new parking signs, which does not decrease traffic, but it does decrease the aesthetics of the community and keeps homeowners from using some extra parking we needed for our grandchildren's birthday parties. Not eliminating the exit roadside parking is an obvious mistake to anyone that visited the location. Adding an alternate parking location only increases visitors and adds a negative ecological impact on the fragile shoreline. More visitors will travel both access roads in our neighborhood, only to find full parking lots, and leave mad and distracted trying to decide where to go next. I also have a BS degree in forestry from Virginia Tech. I frequently hike the entire banks of Jockeys Ridge for exercise in my love of nature. I have noticed a decline in diversity and mortality of the ecosystem. Increasing visitors in this area will have negative impact on the understory which supports wildlife. Jockeys Ridge is home to several wildlife species, such as rabbits, squirrels, foxes, coyotes, and deer. This increased visitation in this wooded area will also push this wildlife out, which means that foxes will chase the rabbits in our neighborhood, the coyotes will hunt our cats and dogs, and the deer will be forced to live on our long grass and shrubs. The state attempted a living shoreline restoration on the north end of the beach, having included a photo, which clearly indicates the attempt had minimal success. With more sound visitors, some will be forced to move up the beach to these locations, which are in fragile condition. Lastly, in the March 2 town meeting, the Board noted the memorandum of understanding had expired, and that the citizens of Nagshead had little input or control over the state park and decisions to make, they make. I would like to refer to the attachment for the state's park act. This plan shall be developed with full public participation. So if this Board's Commissioners is not our voice to the state, then who do we turn to? In closing, I ask you to challenge the study concept for safety of the citizens of Nagshead, the negative environmental impact, and the negative wildlife impact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin.
My name is Megan Vaughn, and I live at 324 West Soundside Road. I'm here to speak about a very dangerous situation in my neighborhood. The real problem is thousands of vehicles bound for an extremely popular attraction, all traveling on a narrow residential street. West Soundside Road has become the drive aisle to the Jockeys Ridge State Park Sound Access. And although I'm not here to talk about the park, I would like to point out that the town is actually responsible for the access. Nagshead developed it, repeatedly secured funding to enhance it, and has a management agreement with the state, which has been modified and/or disregarded over the years. The state did not take over the access. The town gave up control, and residents of the area are paying the price. Facing overwhelming traffic in the summer of 2020, a group of 35 neighbors met near the entrance to the Sound Access. Following that meeting, we composed a letter accompanied by photographs and signed by almost 100 residents of the Soundside and Southridge neighborhoods. Thankfully, you agreed to consider our problem, and after receiving a timeline of the history of the access, asked that a working group be formed to address the issue, and I was part of that group. Unfortunately, much of the working group time, and many months since, have been spent discussing the needs and wants of the state park. We waited nine months to be told that the state is not willing to make changes that might improve neighborhood conditions. In fact, there are expansion plans that will make an already dangerous situation much worse. Unfortunately for us, the state park seems focused on counting as many visitors as possible all day, into the evening, and even after hours. The residents, on the other hand, deserve to live in a safe, quiet, west-side neighborhood, a value this Board has wholeheartedly supported in the past. Soundside Road was here before the town, and there are no sidewalks, traffic islands, feeder streets, or cul-de-sacs. The section from the bypass to the Sound Access gate is a half-mile long and only 20 feet wide. There are 38 distinct households with direct access onto a completely flat, straight road, traveled by those residents, and also connected to Deering Street, which serves some 250 homes and shares the burden of traffic to the state park. Additionally, and most importantly, thousands of non-residents access Jockeys Ridge State Park there year-round. The traffic study you requested last year shows that 3,160 vehicles entered the state park during the last week in July, an average of 451 vehicles per day for a 23-car parking lot. This does not account for all the vehicles dropping people off and parking outside the gate during and after hours. The amount of traffic is threatening and dangerous, and I respectfully request that the town address this important public safety issue before someone is injured or worse. While we appreciate what you've done so far, it is not enough. Why has safety inside the gate become the main focus when each visitor there is first coming down our streets? Since parking for the access begins at the gate, Soundside Road is actually the drive aisle, and it was necessary to prohibit parking in the right-of-way. This further inconveniences residents, but does not solve the problem. The three-way stop on a dangerous curve slows some drivers down, but many still do not stop, particularly those entering and exiting the park near what has become a loading zone. Children and pets are not safe, and people are afraid to walk or ride a bike, especially during peak visitation hours, and around sunset, when vehicles race to catch a glimpse of the same beautiful scenery that we can no longer safely enjoy. Late last year, this Board reduced the speed limit on several streets in the village of Nagshead. It was said at the time that when a pedestrian is struck by a vehicle traveling 30 miles an hour, there is a 40% fatality rate, and this drops to 10% at a speed of 20. You already have a traffic study using a message board, which shows the 85th percentile for speed on Soundside Road was just over 30 miles an hour, and I can assure you that people travel much faster when the message board is not there. This is simply too fast for the volume and nature of the traffic, and effective enforcement is just not feasible. Please reduce the speed limit, and absent the ability to control the volume of traffic, implement any and all calming measures as soon as possible. I think I speak for most of my neighbors when I say that we love Jockeys Ridge, and we are more than happy for others to enjoy it. But our formerly quiet residential street should not be a driveway to the most visited state park in North Carolina. And as long as it is so, the town should do whatever possible to make the old Soundside neighborhood safe.
Ms. Vaughn, that's your five minutes.
Yeah, I'm done. I appreciate your time and consideration this morning, and thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
I actually have a slightly different issue, but it all kind of plays in, and I agree wholeheartedly with everything that has been said by everyone here today. I'm Michelle West. I live at 308 West Danube, Old Nagshead Cove. I am highly concerned about the amount of trees being cut down at such a fast rate, which also applies to things that this gentleman has said about our wildlife, our barrier island stability. The live oak is protected, which is great, but it doesn't seem to be being enforced. I have called the town quite a few times regarding just my neighborhood of this alone. Often, I was told the allowance was being given for the cutting. The one time I did not call, there were two trees that could have been saved had I called the town, and now that person is required to replant. That's great, but it doesn't bring them back very fast. It takes many, many, many years for the live oaks to grow and mature. And the fact that they're gone, I mean, they're going to be plenty. And while I understand that the code deems that a certificate of occupancy cannot be obtained until the replanning happens, there should be much, much stronger penalties put into place, such as a very, very, very large fine. I'm going to say at least $10,000. I don't know if that sounds ridiculous, but if people are hit in the pocket, guess what? They're not going to do it. And they would think twice and not be quite so nonchalant about what they're doing. Another huge issue is the lack of education, and that could be applied to everything that everybody here has said today. People are coming in in droves, they're buying, they're visiting, but no education is given to how to treat this land and protect it. The people moving here, buying sight unseen, many have never even been here before. They literally have no idea. Educating any and all buyers and having them sign an agreement acknowledging that they have received this information, adding the statement of the large penalty that they also must sign, that they have seen and are aware, could go a long way in deterring unnecessary cutting and saving of our barrier island. This could be said about the dune grass vegetation, dunes themselves, what this other gentleman brought up about Soundside Park, pollution, and many other issues as well. If we want to save our own home that we have known for years to come, something must be done about this and a lot of other issues. The growing rate of uneducated people moving, visiting here at such a rapid rate is a huge threat to our environment. It must be realized what it takes to sustain a barrier island. It used to be many people that were buying here, moving here, had been coming here their whole life, loved this place, respected it. Many came from other coastal towns, familiar with the environment. This is no longer the case. Many are only buying for investment, to rent, to see short-term dollars, no thought to longevity, which brings other issues up that I won't go into, but the fast dollar, Airbnbs, the way too many people coming down our roads, our neighborhoods, not main roads. In addition, it has come to my attention that trees other than live oaks are preserved only during planting and committed under Section 4.9. But once occupied, any and all trees could be cut down. There needs to be much, much better policy on this, regarding the cutting of any and all trees, with a certain amount of canopy required to being left, and again, the education and fines imposed. Most importantly, that they are integral parts to our barrier island, but also this beach will lose its character. Many of us moved here for that character. I have left other coastal areas that destroyed themselves in the same exact way, and I left Kill Double Hills because of Nagshead being a town that was more progressive in preservation of character, but I would leave again, and so would others. People are becoming very unhappy with what is happening. Is this the future that we want for our town? Eventually, even tourists will lose interest if we become like any other overdeveloped, any-beach town anywhere, or worse, the island is destroyed because fast money was more important than long-term stability and preservation. I would also like to suggest stricter policy regarding changing site plans after initial approval. I have watched my neighbor go from what would have been acceptable preservation of live oaks to basically none, part of which I am told was because he continued to change the plans. After two to three rounds of cutting the trees, it looked barely acceptable, which, if I could, I'd like to show pictures.
Ms. West, that's your five minutes.
I would just like to say that is this what we really want for the place that we live?
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Erica Arnold. I live off the 233 Soundside Road. This is Adeline Arnold. I just wanted to kind of give you awareness of changes since 2018, since we moved there. Last year, the summer of last year, there was a speeding out-of-state license plate that hit, that actually ran over our mailbox and just took off, left us a red bumper. Me and my little girls were playing out there, and our biggest concern is, we're just raising children, and even our own, we want to feel safe on our own property, you know, not just inside our home in our backyard that we had to fence in, but I can't, I just can't be at ease, really, when I'm on our front property. My little girl, five-year-old, used to run, or she was three at the time, used to run the mailbox back and forth to get mail. That was fun. Can't do that anymore, just because of that. She's also not riding the bus in the afternoons, because again, 400 vehicles coming up and down that street, and we just can't risk it. And now, my concern is, okay, so I have a one-year-old, in four years, when she's going to school, will she be able to ride the bus home? So if we can't even manage the traffic that's coming up and down Soundside for the safety of the families now, what happens when we implement trails or additional parking? I mean, the traffic is just consistently out of control. And so I'm asking you to be a voice, not just for, you know, the residents of Soundside, but the future residents, more children, more animals coming about, just protecting their safety. I'm going to put her down for now, because she's at her end. Thank you for hearing us today.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold.
My name is Maya Holle, and I live on 329 West Soundside Road. I am here representing myself, as well as my husband and two children. First of all, I would like to echo everything that has been said already, especially by all the mothers living in that neighborhood. So we are relatively new residents of this area. We moved there in August of last year, primarily because we love it so much. We love the state park, we love the community, we love the neighborhood. And in the short, you know, eight or nine months we've been there, we noticed several issues, and many of them mentioned before, the main one being the traffic. We perhaps have a little bit of a unique view of what's going on, because we live right across from the entrance to the state park, and the situation is just absolutely alarming. There is a stop sign that we don't really have to wait very long to see. It's constantly being run off. There is no enforcement of any kind. You know, in the peak months, peak hours of the day, what's going on is absolutely out of control. Cars are backing away, cars are trying to get in, no one kind of controls what's going on. So, you know, as a mother of two kids, it's a constant concern to me, being just right across from all of this, and I literally do have nightmares about one of, you know, my young ones, you know, running there, and, you know, we're just waiting for trouble to happen. So that's really the main issue. Other things that we are noticing is, you know, trash. Myself and my family, we go to clean the beach pretty much every day, and you can see that in the summer months when the visitors are on the beach, there is way more trash, and it's very dirty, and it doesn't seem like anyone controls that. And of course, the conservation issue mentioned, as well as noise. So as, again, living directly across from this area, how, we would like, what we would like to see is not any kind of expansion. I mean, more visitors, we're just, I mean, that all of these problems will be compounded. So we would like to see the reduction of the problems that we're seeing there now, or at the very least, some kind of maintenance and control and monitoring of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I'm Bobby Murray, 320 West Soundside Road. As you have been hearing, we have a problem in our neighborhood. I'm appealing to you, Mayor and Commissioners.
I'm appealing to you, Mayor and Commissioners, to help alleviate the unacceptable issues of extremely high traffic volume and lack of public safety on Soundside Road and Deering Street. This high volume of traffic is in part due to the now of Town of Nags Head, Jockeys Ridge, Estorin Access, located at three-thirty West Soundside Road. What was once a twenty-three-car parking lot to be used as an access to the small, fragile sound beach has now been turned into a secondary entrance to Jockeys Ridge State Park. When the park superintendent began allowing parking all along the west side of the drive aisle entering the access, the number of cars parking in the access doubled. There is no way this should be allowed. It is not safe. If there was a need for a fire engine or an emergency vehicle to reach the parking lot, it would be impossible with the cars blocking the drive aisle. It has become clear to myself and my neighbors that the state does not care about the safety issue created by blocking the drive aisle, as they have stated in a letter to you that they will not stop this parking pattern. This is a public safety issue. When they finally responded to the letter from the town with the recommendations for what they could do inside the gate to address the issue of high traffic volume and safety, they were clear that they had no intentions of considering any of them. I do not want to talk about or hear any more about what the state will or won't do. I don't want to hear about any more traffic studies, traffic counts, or surveys. What I want to hear is what can be done with the help of the town, with the town in charge, to alleviate the unacceptable volume of traffic and the lack of public safety on our neighborhood streets. We have many families with infants and toddlers who are not safe taking a walk. I feel that it's time for the town to step up and do something to help us. There's no other west-side neighborhood that suffers from anything close to the problems that we have in our neighborhoods of South Ridge and Soundside Road. As a matter of fact, the two neighborhoods on the north boundary of Jockeys Ridge have signs on the street just as you turn into their neighborhoods clearly stating, "No access to Jockeys Ridge." This is not a problem only in the summer months or when the wind blows northeast. It's year-round. Once the gate is closed, there's no supervision whatsoever inside the gate. Routinely, people park directly in front of the closed gate, in front of a sign that says, "No parking," right on Soundside Road to walk into the park after hours. Some are there for a late swim. I've seen a photographer there shooting engagement photos. They walk their dogs or have a sunset cocktail or two, completely unsupervised, totally unacceptable. In years past, previous park superintendents actually managed the access for drinking, had someone at the gate to notify folks when the lot was full, and actually cared about the natural resource of the fragile shoreline. Now our neighborhood pays the price for the latest trend in park management, which appears to be permitting unlimited access to the park through our neighborhood. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
My name is Michelle Smith. I'm a resident of, um, Soundside Road. Um, and I appreciate the, um, opportunity to speak to everybody. Um, I'm a resident of Soundside Road for the past eighteen years, um, and a daily user of the park, and I'm here to speak about the proposed expansion to the Soundside Access, um, to Jockeys Ridge and its impact on my neighborhood. And I also want to say that I second everybody's, um, thoughts so far. You've spoken far more eloquently than I think I'm about to, um, and touched on many of the issues that I'm not going to address here. Um, my thoughts will primarily focus on safety. The safety of our road has been an ongoing issue for many years that is continually exacerbated by the increased use of our road by visitors seeking access to the Soundside Beach. I want to make very clear that my asking that the town address the safety concerns of our neighborhood is not intended to be made in trade. By that, I mean, the town needs to address the safety of our road, full stop. This is not meant to say that I'm okay with proposed expanded access to the park if you address the safety issues, as I'm wholeheartedly opposed to the proposed plans. The town and the state, frankly, need to recognize that this is first and foremost a family neighborhood, not a commercial thoroughfare for a public space. Soundside Road existed before the park and is primarily inhabited by year-round residents, and like any residential neighborhood, we have quite a few families with young children and grandchildren. Um, echoing the comments of Jim Arnold, um, which I started to write that, and I don't know where I was going with that, but he was awesome. Um, "Our road is dangerous. I can't let my eight-year-old check our mailbox on her own." I think that was part of it. "Teaching her to ride her bike is a far more stressful than it needs to be because of the continuous threat of cars." We're ha- constantly saying, "Get off the road, you have to move." We're having to look behind us all the time. It's just, it's not conducive to getting up to speed and learning how to ride a bike. "I also can't let her walk the three doors down to her grandfather's house alone because of the very real danger of drivers who are speeding and often distracted." "A few years ago, my neighbor came very close to losing her child to a driver that was texting while driving. We were chatting in her driveway while her son skateboarded on the road. Had I not been looking east and screamed for the child to get out of the road, he wouldn't be here today. The driver was traveling at a high rate of speed, texting, veered to our side of the road, and obliterated the mailbox one house down from where we were chatting. It was literally seconds." I'll never shake that image from my mind. "People come off of the bypass, see the long, straight road, and just continue driving at a high rate of speed, and we are constantly needing to wave at people who are going too fast and have had more than one altercation." Uh, we've had more than one altercation with a driver who got mad at us for telling them to slow down. Um, just a, a few months ago, we were waving and saying, "Slow down, slow down," and this guy stopped, and he was like, "I'm not speeding, I'm only going thirty." And we're like, "It's twenty-five, but still, you should be going even less than that." And instead of slowing time down, oftentimes, they speed up. Ultimately, these people have no, uh, need to be on our road, except that they're going to the Soundside Beach or around the corner to watch the sunset. In the scope of park visitation, the Soundside Beach is a tiny little resource that is being exploited at the expense of the safety and quality of life for our entire neighborhood. The plan for expanding access to this little stretch of beach, whether by adding more parking in a turnaround to the existing access, or by building an accessory parking lot directly across from my house, needs to weigh the considerable needs of the stakeholders who will be most affected by these plans, which are the residents of Soundside Road. I recognize that they're associated growing pains with managing the visitorship of the most par- popular park in the state, but our little sound beach is a precious, finite resource. The ecosystem can't handle it. The bacteria levels are consistently too high in the summer to make it safe to swim in the water. Our daily quality of life and our property values are intimately connected to the south side of the park, and our neighborhood, neighborhood shouldn't bear the brunt of this growth. So thank you again for your attention, um, and for your understanding, and we look forward to hopefully working with you to solve this.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, my name's Brian Harvey. I'm an eighteen-year resident of Soundside Road, and I'm here to talk about the issue we've all been talking about this morning. Um, I, on the way here, I just drove by the sign at the access to double-check, and it says, "Neighborhood access." Um, so I have a little bit of a couple different angles on, then, you know, at, the safety issue is obviously the big thing, but I think there's, you know, the state wants to do something. I can't tell if the town is on board with the state or if they're on our side, but I feel like there's a zoning issue. Um, there's a reason, there's a reason we have neighborhood zoning. Sound, uh, Soundside Road is a, is a R-two medium-density residential. Um, and when people choose to live in neighborhood over another, um, they have reasonable expectations that the zoning will prohibit certain kinds of development. There's all kinds of things not allowed in R-two zoning and that limit traffic, et cetera. And I feel like the proposed expansion of this parking is equivalent to the largest commercial entity in our town accessing through a residential neighborhood. It's the same thing. And, um, I just don't think we can invite the millions of tourists who want to come and visit this park to access it through Soundside Road in, in a residential neighborhood. Um, and so this is kind of just a more philosophical angle, and I wrote this, and I'm just gonna read it. Um, despite the, despite the fact that visiting tourists overwhelmingly come here for the Atlantic Ocean Beach, it would appear that the state and the town is increasingly taking the position that Soundside, that a Soundside Sandy Beach attraction is an amenity that must be provided to our visitors. I mean, and as an abstraction, we can all understand the desire to make our town as a, as attractive as possible to visitors, and we know that tourism is the basis of our economy. One can also project that when considering a decision to increase the usage of extremely limited resource that is the Soundside Beach, we may be inclined to take the position of the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. The many in this case would be the seemingly unlimited number, number of visitors to the park, and the few would be just the residents of Soundside Road and Deering Street neighborhood. But here's the thing, the idea that increasing access to this sound beach will pay some kind of dividend in visitor satisfaction or tax dollars is a fantasy. This is because any increase in usage, no matter how big, will only serve a fraction of one percent of the visitor population. Think about that. The sound beach is too small to ever make a dent in satisfying a meaningful number of tourists. Increasing from twenty-five parking spaces to even a hundred parking spaces is meaningless to the ninety-nine point nine percent of visitors who still won't be able to access that sound beach. But the cost to the local residents who built their lives in this neighborhood would be I'm gonna eliminate some of this. Let's see.
You have a minute and a half, Mr. Harvey.
Okay. So anyway, just as a, as a re- as an eighteen-year resident, the negative impact to our way of life will be persistent, long-term, and multifaceted. In contrast, the impact to any tourist family who can't use that sandy beach on any given day because the lot is full is relatively small. Um, are they gonna leave Nags Head unsatisfied because they couldn't go to the sound beach that day? We're never gonna satisfy demand, so why should, why should there be an increased use of this valuable resource? Surely, there's a point where the overuse destroys the resource. Um, can it be measured, studied, estimated? It doesn't take a scientist to see that on any, any high surf advisory day, when that beach is packed, we've already reached the point of overuse of that beach. Jockeys Ridge State Park already has an appropriate entrance and parking directly off the bypass. If the park and town want to increase parking and access to different areas of the park, then obviously, they should do so through the main entrance off the bypass. Residents of Soundside Road should not bear the burden of all the negative aspects and dangers associated with any plan to increase access through the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Hi, my name is John Cece. I live on Link's Drive in the Village, and I'm also here, I was gonna try to inform you, that this town has been overrun by inconsiderate tourists, but obviously, the people in front of me, who spoke before me, have very eloquently pointed that out to you. I'm also here to complain about these maraudy mobs. For some reason, every Thursday morning, the Outer Banks Running Company and Village Realty are allowed to, for all objective purposes, shut the intersection of Link's Drive and Sea Chase Drive to hold a five-k run. I'm wondering why a public company is allowed to shut down a public road for their benefit. They charge each runner thirty-eight dollars a head to run this run. I don't mind people running, but it's gotten to the point where the people that are doing this running are considering Link's Drive a closed running course. If you try to drive, you try to leave your house on Thursday morning, you're verbally accosted by the runners yelling at you to get off of their course. You shouldn't be running here. You shouldn't be driving here. This is a closed course. So, I'm here to ask you for help. I've talked to the planning department, I started, let me see, I started with the Village Realty. Of course, they're those co-sponsors of this run, so they were of no help whatsoever. I went to our Village Homeowners Association. They claim they have nothing to do with it, it's a town. I talked to the planning department last fall, they said they didn't have anything to do with it, and it just dawned on me that, yesterday, that maybe something to the police department. So I contacted Chief Webster yesterday morning, and he's gonna look into this for me. But I haven't been able to figure out what, if any, control there is that the town is, has on this situation. So unfortunately, I do have a solution for this. Please revoke whatever permit, permission, et cetera, that has been given to these companies. Stand up to Village Realty for once, and please let the residents of Link's Drive have their road back on Thursday mornings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cece.
Uh, my name is Molly Vaughn Howard. Um, I currently reside at five-ten West Deering Street. Um, uh, while I'm building, my husband and I are actually building our home in Old Nags Head Cove, which I'd like to quickly add to my future neighbor. We are, saving the live oak trees was our top priority, so thank you for your comments. Um, so I grew up on Soundside Road, and I consider myself extremely privileged to have spent much of my childhood exploring Jockeys Ridge State Park. It is thanks in part to Jockeys Ridge that I am now an environmentally conscious adult and a supporter of public lands. I also consider myself privileged because when I was growing up, all of us kids in the neighborhood were able to safely run around and ride our bikes. We played kick the can and roller hockey in the street and swam in the sound without getting sick. We frequently could be found laying on the warm pavement of the Sound Access when we got too chilled, playing in the water on a summer day. We were once scolded for doing this by a passerby because they thought we were unconscious, but never because it was dangerous due to vehicular traffic. Of course, I understand that the rest of Nags Head outside of Soundside Road has also changed a lot since those days, but when I visit other west-side neighborhoods now, there is still a level of safety, freedom, and tranquility that the kids growing up on Soundside Road now are not afforded. Starting at a very young age, their parents have wisely taught them lessons that I never had to worry about. These instructions go well beyond the basic, "Look both ways before you cross the street" and "Wear a helmet," that we were all taught. They know to get off the road completely when a car comes into view or within earshot. They know to wait and watch until that car has completely passed them before they get back on their bike, back on the road, back to living their life as a child. No young kid should have to worry about getting run over for playing safely in their own neighborhood. Adults can understand that there is always a risk for an accident to happen, but the risk on Soundside Road, um, and I'm, I'm more familiar with the children on Soundside Road, but I'm sure that some of the parents in South Ridge, you know, feel this, are, feel the same, um, is disproportionately high because of the immense volume of traffic using the narrow street as a speedway to the state park or to a sunset photo op. Sadly, the state has chosen maintaining and increasing their visitation numbers over safety and protection of the resource. The common sense response is to eliminate the drive aisle parking and keep the access limited to twenty-three spaces as intended. Instead, the park allows as much, if not more, square footage of parking for the small, fragile beach than the square footage of the beach itself, and possibly plans to expand. Uh, this sounds more like, uh, an amusement park or a shopping mall than a natural resource to me. But hopefully, the town can still do more to correct this worrisome public safety issue and prevent further damage. I urge the Commissioners and the Mayor to take action. I suggest looking at calming measures and speed limit enforcement and anything and everything within your power to prevent, uh, further expansion of vehicular access to the park, uh, through Soundside Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I chose to be last because I figured...
I chose to be last because I figured everybody would say a whole bunch of things that I wouldn't need to repeat. I think Brian's comments on the expansion of the park are dead on. If this parking lot is expanded on Soundside Road, if we implement a new parking lot, if you build it, they will come, and they will come and come and come. And we're gonna end up being at the same place where we are now, needing additional expansion. I beg you guys to represent us, to represent the neighborhood, when it comes to dealing with the State Park, and ask that access be obliged to the public through their main gate instead of our streets.
I'm sorry, could you tell us your name, ma'am?
I'm sorry, it's Michelle Shmento, and I'm at 4025 West Soundside Road. We bought our home 11 years ago. It was a much different place at that time. Now, my son, in seven, two, is 13, and I have to tell you, it crosses my mind to say, instead of riding your bike, instead of meeting your friend in South Ridge to go ride the neighborhood, please go get on your computer and play games. And living in Nags Head as a Virginia native has a dream come true for me to actually live here full-time. That would be a nightmare if my son actually gets hit by a vehicle, and I won't go through all the close calls that we have had. His solution, in his 13-year-old wisdom, is that I sit on my dad's side of the road, which is right across the road from mine, is where my parents live. He wants me to sit there in a beach chair with my hairdryer so that it will look like a radar gun, so that when the cars are coming by, they will slam on the brakes and slow down. So that's his solution. When he rides his bike, I'm supposed to go sit there with the hairdryer to slow them down. I'm hoping that the Commissioners will have more wisdom than my 13-year-old son to actually make a difference. I am not against the State Park, I love the State Park. We did, again, when he was two, we did Seeing the Sound, we participated in the programs. I'm not opposed to them expanding all of their programs and offering it to the public. I was five years old 50 years ago when I started knocking air out of myself rolling down the dunes. I love the park, but this is just crazy. Our pedestrian, our bicycle, our pet safety, the unsafe, you know, parking practices, the traffic jams, and the ecological impact of overusage of the beach are very, it's probably three or four years ago now, we were down there, and of course, all the signs were out about the contamination, so we were not in the water. And I ran across a visitor who said they didn't get in the water even when the signs weren't there because he got gangrene from swimming in the sound. It's just not safe, and that is a real shame because it's a gem, and it should be safe. You know, we think twice when I get in water, even across the road from my house, and it wears deeper, and of course, we don't have the population that they do down at the beach. I have found for myself, it is hard to go 15 miles an hour. I'm lucky I have a car with cruise control, because when I turn on Soundside Road, I put it to 25. You come around the corner and go in front of my house, it's 15. You'd be amazed how many people I talk about, they say, "Well, they should reduce that to 15." It is 15. They don't know it. It's hard to go 15. You know, I understand that, but we've got to somehow slow the traffic down. And so I guess I am here, oh, I know what I was gonna say. So in Kitty Hawk, I've tried bike riding up that way, and I do see the signs, and it's really cool because it'll even track the speed of a bicycle as you drive by, because it will say, "This is the speed limit," and then it has the flashing light, "And this is your speed." Those things are wonderful. I mean, I think that would be a great addition to our neighborhood to raise the awareness because it is hard to go 25, it is even harder to go 15. And so I would love to see at least one of those on each end of our neighborhood to bring to the, or even maybe in the middle of the neighborhood, to bring the attention to really how fast you are going. Too many people are on their phones and listening to music and whatever else, they're not, it takes concentrated effort to go 15 miles an hour. And so I guess what I'm here is to ask for the Commissioners to be representatives of the neighborhood when encouraging the state not to expand and to do whatever we can to get access through the park as opposed to Soundside Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shmento. All right, is anybody else who wishes to address the board? All right, if not, we will conclude the public comment session at this time.
Thank you. Before we go on with our agenda, I'm gonna call a recess for the board. That'll give the opportunity for folks who are ready to leave to leave, and so the board will be in recess for 10 minutes. All right, the board has returned from its recess after the conclusion of public comment. So that brings us to our consent agenda, which is item E, noting that item number four was removed, and so a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended would be in order.
So moves?
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? And next, we will take up the item that was removed, that's item E4, consideration of the multi-year debt book contract.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, the board's indulgence. In reading through it, the contract as it is, it references the pricing as a tier two. There's no definition of tier two. While I read in the previous memo that the money was $6,500, I believe, somewhere the contract should reference the amount or give a definition of tier two. Otherwise, tier two is subject to change any time without us even knowing what it is. And I'm not a fan of open-ended contracts.
All right, very good. So would there be a motion on the contract perhaps citing the amount for this occasion and then changing that in the future?
That'd be fine. I would make a motion that we adopt the debt book contract in the amount of $6,500 for this current year.
Okay, all right. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second.
Just a point of clarification, I'm sorry. When you say this current year, do you mean this current fiscal year or calendar year?
For the year that this contract starts.
Starts, okay.
The effective date is 7/1/22.
Okay, so it'd be the coming fiscal year, then.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
The only thing I would ask, that since this contract expires in '25, that any further increases come back so that we will know how much they're increasing.
Sure, they provided a three-year proposal. The total for the three years is $26,488, obviously not paid all at once, but paid over the course of three years, so what I could do is just incorporate that as part of the adopted budget. Well, that's, right, and there's an escalation each year. But the amount of the contract would have to be adopted as part of the adopted budget each year.
So $6,500 this coming year, and then there's an increase each year?
Yeah, that's, yes, sir.
Can we have that somewhere inserted?
Sure.
So that anybody that looks at the contract would know what the amounts are gonna be?
Sure, I can send that to Carolyn.
Looking back to a budget's not necessarily gonna tell you what a contract amount is gonna be.
Sure.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve this contract, which runs for a 12-month period in the amount of $6,500. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. That brings us to public hearings, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Lydie again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the first public hearing, which is a public hearing to consider the rezoning of property located at 2110 South Pond Avenue at the Nags Head Water Plant from SED 80, Special Environmental District, to C3, Commercial Services, in advance of the design process for the Public Services Master Plan. This is a legislative matter, and we will begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by Planning Director Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. When we pull this up, it's probably helpful to go ahead and bring up an aerial photograph of the property that we're about to talk about and a little bit of a zoning map. But as noted, I'm here before you this morning to present a zoning map amendment request or rezoning request for the property at 2110 South Pond Avenue. That's on the northern part of town. Pond and Lark are where most of our Public Works facilities are located. Here's an aerial photograph of the property we're talking about, 2110 Pond. This is the Nags Head Water Plant. If you scroll down to the next attachment in your packet, you can see why we're here this morning, is that this purple area is the C3, the Commercial Services Zoning District. And the property, the 2110, this is actually green. This denotes that it's in the SED 80, Special Environmental District, zoning district. So as I know all of you are aware, we are in a process of developing a Public Works Facilities Master Plan. The consultant working on that, Oakley Collier, is in the process of doing a schematic for what this master plan should include. And when we started looking at this and realizing lot coverage calculations, setbacks, all of those things are different between the C3 and the SED 80, so to provide more consistency as we begin looking at the master plan, the request would be that this property, 2110 South Pond, be rezoned to C3, Commercial Services, and just encompassed with all of these other properties here on the north end of town. Also included in your packet at the planning board level, questions of its location within the Fresh Pond AEC did arise, so I did wanna point out that the property is located within the Fresh Pond AEC. The historical use of the property and current use of the property, which Fresh Pond is no longer a potable water supply, but we do purchase water from Deer County at this plant, it's chlorinated and then distributed, so the use of the property, the intensification, the intensity of the property, the use would not change. And based upon our current code, the existing use is more compatible with the C3 zoning district than with the SED 80 zoning district. In terms of the analysis, that's all I have for you. I did include the intent of both the C3 and the SED 80 in your package. Staff recommends adoption of the map amendment as it's been proposed, and the planning board reviewed this at their February 15th meeting, and that was a unanimous vote to recommend approval of the map amendment as requested.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? None? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public here who wishes to comment on this proposed rezoning? Does the board wish to receive any other information regarding this rezoning request before deliberating? All right, if not, we will now conclude the public hearing, and the board may begin its deliberations on this proposal.
All right, thank you. Having heard the report and having no questions, we can start with a motion.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
We recommend a review of the proposed map amendment as requested.
Thank you. I have a motion and a, did I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. And I think, Kelly, are you up still for the, next, or, John, I guess you're still in charge?
Yes, I am.
Another public hearing.
I'll be glad you take this one on. All right, so at this time, we will now begin the public hearing, the second public hearing. This one is to consider the permanent closure of a portion of 8th Street as follows. It's approximately the 300-foot portion of 8th Street located between Pond Avenue and Fresh Pond in the Fresh Pond Beaches subdivision adjacent to lots 1 through 6 in the town of Nags Head. Resolution of intent was previously adopted by the board at the March 2, 2022, board meeting, giving the public notice of the intent to close this road, and so at this time, we will now begin a public hearing to consider that action. And I believe we will start with presentation of information on this by Town Manager Andy Garman.
Oh, great. Thank you, that was a very good summary. I'm not sure I have a lot to add, other than the fact, this kinda goes along with the item that Kelly presented. The reason we wanted to close a portion of this is so we can use this portion of the property for the Public Works Master Plan. This would allow us to bring in a drive aisle along that north side of the property and not have to adhere to the zoning setback on the north side. So we have coordinated this with the town of Killable Hills, and they are pursuing similar action, and I believe that's on their agenda for April 11th to complete this process, and then we will do a recomination plat to formalize this and record it. In speaking with the town attorney prior to the meeting, he had a suggestion, maybe you can go over that with the board, John?
Yes, so we'll, since there's a portion of the road that is within the control of the town of Killable Hills, and they're gonna be taking action on this on the 11th, our recommendation is that the board, if the board is inclined to approve the closure and adopt the resolution, that the resolution be amended to indicate that the closure will be effective April the 11th, so there won't be no gap between our action and the town of Killable Hills' action.
And I don't have anything further to add.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Andy?
Andy, when looking at that, removing that section of the road that's split with Killable Hills, and this master plan works, there seems to be, besides the town access, only one other access off of Pond. Was Pond ever looked at?
Was Pond ever looked at for access?
Well, to expand, I mean, just expanding to the north, could you expand it to the east to get what you wanted to get?
We're still proposing to use Pond
As your access.
As the access, in the same location that we have the access now, so that's not changing. Right now, the street is part of the right-of-way, so if we were to, say, close a part of Pond, and a portion of that becomes our property to the center line, now that becomes essentially a drive aisle that counts against our lot coverage. So I'm not sure there's any advantage to us doing that, the way everything's laid out. The main reason we wanted to do this is that north side, where we wouldn't have to adhere to, the setback would essentially move 30 feet or 15 feet further, and that would allow us to put the building in a better location. We wanted to put the building next to the water plant because this is gonna be a water distribution shop, and this would finally allow the whole water team to be together in one spot, so that's really what we're hoping for.
Any other questions for Mr. Garman? Anybody else?
Question for the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
John, is it effective April the 11th? Would that be beginning of day or end of day, or concurrent to?
You can make it, making it effective upon the town of Killable Hills taking similar action.
Okay.
To simultaneous, yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Garman while we're at his section? If not, all right, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this proposed closure? If not, does the board wish to receive any other information about this proposed street closure? All right, if not, we will conclude the public hearing on this matter, and the board may begin its deliberations. There is a proposed resolution in your packet, but again, if you're going to make a revision to that, to make it simultaneous with the approval by the town of Killable Hills, that would just be an amendment to the resolution.
Okay, very good, thank you. In which case, having had the information presented and seeing no questions, a motion would be in order. Commissioner Cahen.
Motion to adopt the resolution as presented with the addition of verbiage to indicate that it shall become effective simultaneously with the adoption of Killable Hills doing the same closure of 8th Street. Second.
Very good, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to item G, reports and recommendations from the planning board and Planning Director. Ask Kelly to come to the podium.
I think we can probably go through this relatively quickly. Moving through what's occurred over the past month, at the planning board's last meeting, they did hear an update on the Whalebone Park concepts, as well as some information that we received from the March 3 public input meeting. You're going to hear more about that today from our senior environmental planner, Kate Jones. That's going to be on the agenda following this. We did talk about the current regulations that we have in our town code for tree removal and tree preservation. We did note that we do have some significant regulations for those things. They're just scattered all throughout the UDO, so it's a little bit difficult to figure out what all we actually do enforce. So we put that together, presented that to the planning board, and the next step is just going to be to see if there's a way to clarify or enhance those existing regulations. And we have also, Kate and I spoke about some education opportunities as far as our tree ordinances go. The planning board also received an update on the Resilient Coastal Communities Program, of which we have also provided input on as part of the director's report. Coming up at their April 19 meeting, the planning board will hear a text amendment request submitted by Eddie Goodrich to increase the habitable area allowed for dwelling units included in a cottage court. They're also going to get an update, again, on Resilient Coastal Communities, and the EV action plan should be relatively complete by that point. So decentralized wastewater management plan, and like I said, the Whalebone Park update, you're going to hear about those a little bit later. Estrein Shoreline Management Plan, they did have an advisory committee meeting on March 7. At this point, the consultants are really doing a deep dive into the engineering report, and we outlined what that entails as part of this update, as well as provided a link to the Estrein Shoreline Management Plan project page. The Kamala Land Use Plan has been certified, so that's good news. The Resilient Coastal Communities Program, there's a lot of information in your package here. I did want to point out, the first link that you're going to come to, it's actually an interactive map that Candice Andre with VHB and her principal planner, Holly White, helped put together. It's a map of critical assets and natural infrastructure. I don't want to click it and download it. It will hem us up for probably 10 minutes, but if you have time, it's really worth looking at. It's a nice map. Also, there's going to be a survey going out, which we have a link to. Quick update on Soul Smart. We did go through the process of submitting what our current UDO provides in terms of solar energy, the availability of permitting for solar energy, and the ease of having solar concepts within your development. And after doing that, we were designated, we received a bronze designation from the program. This program is to make it faster, easier, and more affordable for homes and businesses to go solar. So that is exciting. We do have a plaque over at Town Hall that says we're in the bronze designation. The EV action plan should be coming together towards the end of May, which you'll see Let's see, moving down. So our LID Stormwater Demonstration Project, Public Works and Kate have been very busy. They've gone ahead and graded and excavated the rain garden area out here, added topsoil, the soil amendments, and one round of plantings have already been installed, so it looks really great out there. There's going to be another phase of plantings that we're going to try to coordinate with Earth Day, I believe, so that'll be nice. The copper gutters, as many things are delayed in getting those, but as soon as we receive them, they'll go in. We anticipate that that's going to be completed by May. The Dominion LED Amber Streetlight Pilot Project, the planning board, Board of Commissioners, have been made aware of that internally. Staff has been as well, and we did put that out on the website to receive input. So I hope to kind of wrap that up here soon, so we can let Dominion know which fixture we prefer. The last thing that I have is just the application process has closed for the Doughty Park Farmer's Market. We received a lot of applications. I want to say 186, but it might be a little less than that. It might be around 160. But we're looking at 50 to 60 vendors, so it's going to be a really difficult selection process. Our Art and Culture Committee is going to be meeting next week, so that will be quite a task to whittle that down. So that's what we have on the horizon. If you have any questions about anything in the report, I'm happy to answer them.
Good. Any questions? Commissioner Kahoon?
Kelly, I know you're going to get the plan for the electric vehicle back at the end of May. When do we anticipate installing our feature for plug-in for electric vehicles?
So I am, I'm going to have to look into that more for you. I don't have an answer. I know that we were looking at several opportunities to provide onsite charging facilities here at Town Hall. I'm not sure that we've made progress with any of those based upon the requirements of us having to provide the maintenance of those facilities, and that wasn't something that we were looking to do at this time.
Okay.
But we're still pursuing several avenues to be able to provide some EV infrastructure here at Town Hall.
And the last question. The UDO was supposed to simplify things for people. I'm not sure it has, and you just made a statement about our vegetation removal and tree ordinance being in a lot of different places. That does not give me a level of comfort to have people be able to find everything. Is there any way to put all of that, all those items that pertain to the same things in one place where everybody, where a person can come look at it, instead of having to search through the UDO?
Yeah, I think there's a way to do that. Yeah, I definitely think there's a way to do that, and maybe it's just providing an appendix or a document where things that people need to access pretty regularly, like tree preservation, also commercial site design, things of that nature, you're having to pop around to several different places. So if we could get it all in one place, that would be ideal. So I'll look into that. I think it would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Kelly? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I will observe that I was at a meeting yesterday morning with a local contractor, and they volunteered that they were very appreciative of the way the manager and staff had dealt with the stormwater, residential stormwater issue.
Right.
They were very happy that the town jumped in and got that done. So I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is the update on Whalebone Park and the Partif grant application. Calling Kate Jones. I'm excited about this. I like the plan.
I looked at that. That looked nice.
It does look nice. It's fairly simple and straightforward, but it has just about everything.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Commissioners and mayor, good morning.
Good morning.
Michelle's just opening up a PowerPoint that will just add some additional information that I think will make us have a better conversation. But I'm here today to update you all on the Whalebone Park project, specifically the application to the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. So that's the overall goal. Let's just go through where we are and what we've done. We've held some public input meetings. We've had a public meeting, which occurred on May 3, I'm sorry, March 3. We have a public survey out that is still open, and we also, I attended two civic group meetings, all to receive feedback for the park. I won't go through the public survey data that's in your packet. It's lengthy, but I did want to provide it in case you wanted to take a look. I would encourage you to please take a look at Alice's drawings. She was five years old, and that's in your packet. She provided some excellent sketches of things she'd like to see in the park, so, when you get a chance. But I think the overall feedback we received kind of just reinforced what, you know, some of the things I think the board would like to see as well. Orientation towards smaller children and families. The spray play seems to be, you know, the big thing that everyone wants to move towards. So we've included that in our Partif application. The site plan for Partif is very specific. You have to color code things in green, so that's why some things are in green. Basically, they want to break out what you're asking for as a part of the project. And the things that are kind of just the normal, clear background are existing, so that's why this plan looks a little different. But as you can see, the spray play and bathroom and shade were really the three things that seem to rise to the top. They do kind of go along with each other. So we've added a couple of shade structures, and we can keep that simple, and gotten some pricing on park shade structures that can withstand wind loads. And additional, I think we'll talk a little bit about today, about spray play. I just wanted to get some feedback from you all on how to move forward and make sure that you're comfortable with the type of spray plays that exist and that may work well here. Do you all have any questions about public comment we've received thus far, or, you know, any of the survey information? I just want to make sure I address anything, if you had any comments about that.
I read through the comments that you provided in our backup, and they were fairly consistent.
Okay.
You know, it seemed that most folks were sort of looking for the same kind of improvements, and they were, again, consistent with what the board had spoken of. And I did attend one of the public input sessions, which was really great, and it was nice to see a lot of energy in the room about doing this. And so, that's great. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will, let's talk for a minute about spray play, because I think the last time we spoke, we were talking very generally about it. But, let's see if I can move. There's just a quick napkin sketch I did that might be if you were looking north-northwest. You'd have a little spray play area and some seating benches around it, some shade and kind of the restroom behind that. So again, it was just a quick way to kind of think about how this could be laid out. Again, you'd have a security fence behind it, and then even a row of plantings that could further buffer from the road there, because, you know, it is loud, it is there, and I know we've heard about safety and keeping kids from running out there. So I just wanted to provide a visual, this won't be a part of the Partif application, but more just a, something for, to kind of visualize what it would be like. Splash pad trends, you know, these are becoming really popular. We've talked about this before, but it's definitely something that would be unique, and I think would not only provide recreation for visitors, but I think a lot of our local families would really enjoy it as well. Okay, Nidia and Greddy, the two main systems here that exist, to my knowledge and from conversations with manufacturers, are a pass-through system, which basically means you hook up to potable water supply, and the water passes through and then it exits via drain. So it's a pretty simple system. It's plumbed in. In some cases, you don't even really need electricity to put this in. And of course, it would free up budget to do other items like restroom, the shade. So this is one option. The other option below is a recirculation system. Again, you would be hooking up to a potable water supply, however, that water would be reused. And so it would go through a pretty extensive system. It would rechlorinate the water, and it would pass it through. Obviously, this type of system, and we'll get into this briefly, but it's more expensive, and it would require a pretty high level of maintenance, maybe on the realm of someone who manages a pool would need to come in and really understand the chemicals and the systems to really make this happen. So, this is an example from the manufacturer of a recirculation system. I mean, from the outside, they don't look all that different, but what's different are all the components you don't see underground. And this cost to recirculate the water and to have all the components in place that treat the water was an estimate, you can see they're up on the right, close to $300,000, and that's installed. So, you know, high water conservation, high cost. The other type, actually, this just speaks to some of the maintenance, and I know you can't see that sheet, but this would be a yearly maintenance. There'd be about, for that recirculation system, estimated $560 just to clean it up and start it up. This is from the manufacturer, $2,400 per month to maintain this type of system, and that's hourly wages for the person. It's the chemicals and materials, it's everything. And then, of course, your winterization can run upwards of $700 each year. So you have to kind of think about those costs in addition to the initial. The other type of system, there we go, the pass-through system, which is called Aqua Smart for this particular manufacturer, a little bit lower cost, not as much equipment, a very simple plum system. So you can see the cost is much less. It could free up costs to do other elements in the park that the public is requesting. So I wanted to provide these two systems. I think with a little bit of creativity, a system like this, staff has been talking about is, if we were to install a simpler system, is there a way to reuse that water in the irrigation system onsite? Could we do something like that, that would be relatively less than the big, big ticket of all that equipment? So we're currently looking into some discussions with Public Works and what that would look like, a way to reuse that, again, as potable water, reuse that in the irrigation system.
Do you have a cost of how much water you're going to spend per month?
So we do have a gallons, we do know the gallons per minute that this system uses, the pass-through. And I was just talking to Public Works about this the other day, so we do have that information on the system.
How does that compare to your other system?
Um, well, so again, it does depend on how often the system's running, so it's like a push button. But if it's running consistently, and you have a lot of people there using it all day, it would probably be similar in water use, the first pass-through, but it's just that that other system starts to reuse it after a certain amount of time, so the water consumption's a lot less, yeah.
But the overall cost is similar between the two?
Between the two systems?
Yeah, your startup cost is more for the recirculating system, less on this system, but your water use is more on this system, even with the maintenance cost on the other. I mean, I think that's where the...
Yeah, I think you're right, that the water use would be more, and we were hoping to offset some of that by reusing that onsite with irrigation. So you'd be pulling water for irrigation for the site from potable water, and if we could offset that by reusing some of the water from this, it could really help, so.
Are we currently irrigating the site?
Yes, we are.
Or are we using potable water for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, and if, I guess, you know, the purpose of this is to get y'all's feeling on which system you think might be more appropriate. I think we have the budget, really, it's a matter of shifting shells around and making it work, but I think we have the budget. I think in some ways, this one offers a little more flexibility.
The, this...
The pass-through.
So for the Partif grant, we don't have to specify which system we're using at this point?
We really probably should, because they want to see a line item of what you're going to spend on the spray play. However, we could be creative in that we could ask, because we're going to be applying for another grant, there may be a way to get creative and use some of that funding as well, so, yeah.
Because, you know, sort of building on what Commissioner Sears is asking, my first impression is that I sort of hate the idea of using potable water and throwing it away.
Yeah, I agree.
And, but at the same time, I also understand that we've had a lot of conversations about maintenance of the skate park, and if we put in a system to treat water, that's a And if we put in a system to treat water, that's a maintenance item in addition to a cost item. And, you know, we're going to pass that on to future boards to, to say, you know, here's an entertainment structure that, you know, this pass board built and it's got a lot of expense to it. And at some point, that treatment system has to be replaced and, and all of that. So I would really like, we, we, you know, can approve something today. But I, I would really like to have that comparison. I'd like for us to estimate for a season, you know, just take a guess at how long the water's running, how many gallons that is, you know, and what that cost is based on what our, you know, system cost is. And, and that would give us, I think, a comparison to look at the two and, and have some justification for that decision, you know, which, which way we're going. Cause I, I just, I really hate throwing away potable water if there's any other way to, to do it. But I, I have the concern about the, about the maintenance.
I would agree. I like the idea of having the splash, splash and play, whatever, splash pad. But before I decide between which one is which, I need more information.
Okay.
A better cost analysis is what I need.
And specifically looking at the, the water use part of it and the cost associated with that potable water.
Yeah.
I mean, the town has to pay a cost for it too. I mean, with county, now if the county waived the fees, that'd be a little bit different. But somehow I don't think they're going to do that.
Yeah. Right.
I agree. I like the splash pad, but the total water usage on this particular one here, the pass-through. So I want to have that information.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Sears, for bringing that up too.
Just logistically, so we'll, staff will work on getting these numbers together. Is there an opportunity to present this back to the board? Just so you all know, the, and again, I think, I think we can get creative and work with it. But the deadline for Part of is May 2nd. Would there be an opportunity to?
Do you want me to approve the application?
You know, I, I would, if there's a way for us to go ahead and approve the application, I'd like for us to do that. I do want to tell the board I haven't done this yet. But when we get to the closed session and the discussion of the real estate item, depending on what we hear at that point, I may ask the board to consider a mid-month meeting so that we can expedite that issue.
Okay.
But I, but, but if we can go ahead and deal with this item, if someone can craft a motion that'll go ahead and deal with this item, I think that would be great.
In the packet, the application cover sheet you included, it just has the total amount of the request, right?
That's correct.
And then the match, it doesn't include the budget, like the line item budget that you were referring to?
Um, they will want to see that, yes.
Yes, but you, you don't have it in the packet today.
That's correct, yeah.
So if they approve the application based on the cover sheet and the requested amount, we can come back and give the board the information.
That's correct, yeah.
And then we could adjust the, the internal budget of the application from there.
Yes, that's a great idea.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right.
Okay.
So are we ready then perhaps for a motion to approve the, the application?
Motion to approve the application as presented?
Yeah. I believe that would be correct, yes. That would be sufficient.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the application as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is really exciting. I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see this moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah. If you, if you walk the sidewalks that are on the plan and go back through the parking lot and you take the, the one that extends into the right-of-way, if, when you get there, if you walk to one end and back to the other end and you'd make that loop, five of those makes a mile. So it's going to be a good little walking space for, for people to, which is great. All right. Very good. Thank you. And the next item on our agenda, G3, is discussion of the Decentralized Waste Water Management Plan. I will call on Kyle Shepard.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I believe Ms. Shell is pulling up Holly Miller from Tetra Tech. So you've had a little bit of time with the Decentralized Waste Water Management Plan document so far. And so myself and Holly Miller, and we also have Bob here with us to answer any questions that you guys might have, listen to any concerns, hear your feedback. And we are asking for final comments by April 15th.
All right. Very, very good. We'll get Holly up there. Before we start, I do want to say, former Mayor Mower has told me that he is working on one of the items I'd requested, which was a little sort of elevator speech cheat sheet that I can take to the community, to the fellow mayors. This is something we've talked about wanting to engage the community on. And, and he's pointing to Kylie, so maybe you're working on that.
Yeah. So we have received that document from Bob and it's currently circulating around town staff to look over and just provide comments and feedback on that as well. So yeah, we're, we're in the works on that.
Okay. Excellent.
So I am here virtually and I don't have camera yet, but I just wanted to know if you all had any questions or comments on the Decentralized Waste Water Management Plan?
Good, good morning, Holly. And I'll just make sure you can hear us as well?
I can, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Then I, I don't know that we need the camera, so I'll ask the board if anyone has any questions. I'll start with Commissioner Brinkley.
Yes, sir. No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, continue.
And I appreciate the fact that items have been included for consideration in our CIP for this year.
Yes. That's right. Commissioner Sears?
No questions, and I appreciate y'all's work.
Yeah. Yeah, I do. It's a good plan. Obviously, it had a lot of input and, and good input. We all had an opportunity to give it input. And so, so it is a fully considered plan and, you know, the data loggers and some other pieces that we'll go ahead and adopt and hopefully adopt in the capital budget. We'll get this rolling. And, and the other piece, there are a couple of other pieces, the sort of talking points. And it's my understanding, Manager Garman, perhaps among others, has also talked to Coastal Studies as this possibly being an item for community discussion, something that we could, in partnership with them, take out to the community and address some of their concerns about protecting air investment by having the other communities sort of, sort of be able to, be equipped to follow along. So all of that's, all of that's great stuff.
Excellent. That's great. Well, thank you all so much. And just to give you all a quick update as well, we, we presented the data from the analysis of both the plan and the information that the town has been collecting from water quality and groundwater at WRI conference earlier this month. And then I have an abstract in to present at the American Society of Floodplain Managers here in North Carolina in May from the resiliency standpoint. So the word is getting out about the amazing things this program is bringing to the coast. And it, it kind of sparks that change. So I'm very excited to be a part of this plan. And we'll be finalizing it in the next couple of weeks. And then it'll come back to y'all in May for final approval.
All right. Fantastic. And one more pass to the Commissioners for any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, thank you, Holly, for, for weighing in. And thank you, Kylie.
Thank you guys so much. Thanks.
Thanks to everyone. Thanks to everyone who participated in, in developing that, that plan.
Really positive note.
It is a very positive note. This is a, this is a very proactive thing on the part of the town. Yes?
I was going to mention one thing too as well. I know the, the plan's going to be before the board next month for, for consideration of adoption. We are going to be presenting the budget next month as well. And we've been working on the draft budget and we're trying to incorporate a lot of these recommendations in the budget right now. So we're, we're following along consistent with these recommendations so far.
Very good. Thank you. Good to hear. All right. That brings us to old business from previous meetings. And I know we have some folks who are here for this item. And this is consideration of modification to the chapter on vehicles for hire.
Mayor, Commissioners, during the March 23rd Board of Commissioners meeting, Robin Rector, owner of Lady Jane T and R Taxi Incorporated, came before the board and requested a rate increase for taxi companies operating in Nagshead. She submitted a, a document which analyzed rates in Wilmington and Raleigh to formulate an increase for our taxi industry. She also proposed some rate increases herself, which were 350 for a rental, 260 per mile and 26 per hour wait fee, with our current rates being three for the rental, 210 per mile and 21 for the rate fee. So we were tasked with reviewing this and submitting a recommendation to y'all. And we looked at some other areas. Of course, she had presented some, some things as well. And we looked at other areas and found that they're really all over the map, anywhere from $4 on the drop fee or the original rental, all the way down to 250. Just depends on where you're looking. We contacted the other four comp taxi companies that operate in Nagshead. And with the proposed increase that Ms. Rector presented, they all agreed with the raise. And I was pleased to say that at least two of them showed a concern for going too high. They felt that going too high was going to penalize people who live here year-round and depend on taxis for, for transportation. And one operator did point out some, some issues with our math, in fact, because the 260 per mile rate would be difficult to configure because you would end up with like a .433 type measurement. So we proposed, or he proposed 270, which comes down to .45, or 45 cents per mile. Or per, six of a mile. Thank you. So we recommend a new rate of 350 for the rental, 270 per mile and 27 per hour wait fee. And we additionally reached out to neighboring jurisdictions for the proposed increase and they found no conflict with anything that they do. Also, the town manager contacted me about maybe looking at the increase in the fuel surcharge. And I wanted to speak to Ms. Rector before we made that decision. And I think what we have, we don't want to go too high on that fuel surcharge. And I think she was in agreeance with that. And at the same time, I thank you again for speaking to you, Ms. Rector, that it's, it's really hard to apply that because a lot of the old customers, when they get into a cab and they see now it's $5 just to get in the cab, that's, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big jump. But it's still there. The $2 is still there on the books in case we need to use it. The only thing I might add to that is if we propose a change in that, maybe include some language in there where it would be discretionary up to $2 or up to 250 as opposed to just $2 or just 250, if that makes any sense.
When you talked to the other taxi, taxi companies that you spoke with, was there, was there discussion about the surcharge?
Yes. I told them all about the surcharge on the front end, that we were doing that to help them out. They were all extremely happy with that, that we would go to bat for them like that. But no discussion about increasing that surcharge.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, can you question?
Just that I'd like further evaluation of that surcharge at some point. That's been on the books for quite a long time and I'm not sure it's still financially feasible in today's world of $4 a gallon gasoline. So further analysis other than just asking this and that. And I think that, I don't think our fee schedule's been looked at a long time on that line and it probably needs to change.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
No, nothing at this time. I would only say that I hope it doesn't take, if we need it, this much time to, you know, change this again.
Yeah.
I agree. I think, I'm sorry to the taxi cab companies, we did not act and weren't prepared to act at the last meeting. That, that should not happen again.
So thank you, Chief. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And so, yeah, I think probably at this point then a motion would be in order before any further discussion.
Motion to approve the changes as presented?
Second. Thank you. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Appreciate that. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. It provides a service to our community.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is new business, and that would be committee reports. And I'll start down at the other end.
Nothing, nothing currently to report.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Brinkley? Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. The next item then on the agenda is item I2, which is the Beach Nourishment Multi-Decadal Master Plan, and that will be David Ryan.
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. So this agenda item is being submitted as a continuation of the Multi-Decadal Beach Nourishment Master Plan. Right now, we're in the middle of the year two process of that master plan, which is currently ongoing, which covers things such as engineering analysis, geotechnical services, sand volume needs, as well as preliminary, preliminary nourishment designs and templates, and looking at phasement, phasing, excuse me, and nourishment intervals. It's expected that our consultant, Moffett and Nickel, will be giving a report here at your June board meeting to give a progress update regarding that ongoing work. What is being submitted for your review and approval is years three and four, which basically covers the programmatic permitting process. And we anticipate that that's going to occur over both fiscal year '22, '23 and '23, '24. Included in your board packet is actually a schedule which outlines that process and how that will continue over that, that two-year term. And it's, it's expected that a bulk of that will be tied up with agency coordination in order to go through that environmental permitting process. So included for your consideration, this is a three-part request. And the, the first part would be the adoption of an amendment to the Capitol Project Budget Ordinance. The second request would be for the budget amendment in the amount of $841,841. And the third request would be for the, to authorize the town manager to execute the task order eleven for the fee proposal with Moffett and Nickel in the amount of $841,841. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for David?
That's pretty thorough. Thank you.
Yes, it is. Thank you. All right. Hearing no questions, then we can start with those three motions. And the first would be, a motion would be in order to amend the budget ordinance.
Is that lived?
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to amend the budget ordinance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next would be the budget amendment. Motion would be in order to approve the budget amendment.
For the town manager to execute?
Uh, I thought there was another item.
Well, there's three items. There's a project ordinance, there's a budget amendment, which we just, I thought we just did the budget amendment.
So the first part was the Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment. And then the second was the budget amendment in the amount of $841,841.
That's the one we just did, right?
Uh, no. We just did the ordinance.
The project ordinance. So you covered the first one. Now the second one would be the actual budget amendment in that amount.
Make a motion that we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $841,841.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Do we have all the information? Commissioner, can you?
I see two.
And then lastly, it would be the, to authorize the town manager to execute the fee proposal in the amount. in the amount of $841,841.
Can I have the clerk read back what we've done?
You adopted the amended budget ordinance, that was the Beach Nourishment Capital Project Ordinance.
Right.
And the second one was just the regular budget amendment?
Okay.
That transfers funds that we do, like everyone, and then this.
The last one is Task 11.
That is correct.
Right.
Okay. So I make a motion to authorize the manager to execute Task 11.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to authorize the manager to execute Task 11. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's a big leg, Bo.
All right. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to present in open session. I do have a request for closed session items.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll come back to those. That brings us then to items referred to and presentations from the town manager, first being project updates. Andy, are you covering that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Michelle's got something she's going to bring up real quick. I just want to give you a brief update. This is something that we've been working on for a while now. So basically, last year, the board had asked us to look at updating our traffic control map, and we've been working on that, although it's taken a little bit longer than we wanted it to, but there's a reason for that. So what we've got up on the screen here is a draft traffic control map, and what we've been working on is an inventory of all of our signs, and we've done this in the field using GIS. And Public Works has primarily been heading this, Karen Hagie has been the staff person doing the data collection, and so the first part of this involved developing a database to capture all the sign information that we want. And so that was done last year. Eric was working with Geographic Technologies Group to do that. So we did that, and then we set up these mobile devices to do the data collection. Karen has done a great job on this, and so now we finally have a data set that we can use to overlay on top of our draft traffic control map and identify basically what we have in the field versus...
Is there something going on, or?
No, your phone.
Oh, okay. What we have in the field versus our draft map, so we can make corrections as necessary. And as the board would probably guess, there's a lot of variety of different types of signs in the field, and we probably have over a couple thousand signs in our inventory. So now we have, finally have a complete inventory of all of our regulatory signs. So on the screen, you see a draft map, and Michelle, if you could go to the next slide? So basically, and I know this is a little bit hard to see, but, so you've got a GIS data set, and that little table in the window there, that's essentially all the data that we collected on each sign in terms of height, location, size, direction they're facing. I'm not sure if we were able to actually determine the age, but we do have a condition assessment of each sign, as well as a photograph of the sign. So Michelle, if you could go to the next slide? So this is essentially the data set we have. Next slide, Michelle, thank you. And if you slide over real quick, so then that's just an example of a picture, so each data point has a picture, we have a complete inventory of the signs, and so that just kind of shows you what we're doing. Is there any other slides? Is there one more? So then...
Busy.
It is very busy, it's hard to see, but it's a lot of information. So basically, to go along with this, we had to develop an online GIS site, so we could go ahead and collect the data in the field. And once that data was collected, it was automatically uploaded in real time to this online GIS, so we could then go in and verify everything, which Karen has been doing. And so I just wanted to give the board an overview of that. Along with this, we'll be publishing a new town GIS website here in the near future. The signs, I'm not sure we'll put out there, we'll probably put out the traffic control map, but we'll have other layers that we're going to be publishing along with that. So this project has kind of morphed into a lot of different things that we've been wanting to try to do. So I think this will be good for staff and the public to have this kind of resource in the future. Years ago, we had an internal GIS software program we used, and we had gotten away from it. We're going back to that and trying to reinvigorate our GIS program at the town. So we've kind of killed a number of birds with one stone here. With that said, we'll probably take the next month or two to review the data collection that Karen did, overlay it on top of the traffic control map we already have, have our police look at it, make corrections, and then bring a final traffic control map to the board for adoption, which would be a completely revised map that would be now digital. And so that's where we're at with that. I can answer any questions that you have. Again, I'd like to thank especially Karen Hagie for her help on this project. She spent a lot of time in the field doing this and coordinating with Eric and the vendor on making sure that the data was correct and things were being entered accurately. And certainly Eric for his help on this as well. So, any questions?
It sounds like an awful lot of work's been done, thank you very much.
Digital traffic control map is something that I've asked about for several years, and the fact that we're now getting to that point is exciting, so thank you to Karen and other town staff that have put in the time to get us to where we are. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
I know Karen's gone, but please don't let this drop through the cracks. Make sure the new person is keeping on with it.
But Karen's still here.
Okay.
But yeah, she's continuing to work on this and verify it, and... Are you talking about Karen Snyder? I was mentioning Karen Hagie.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Right, thank you.
Karen Hagie in Public Works was actually doing the field data collection, so...
We have more Karen's we need to have.
Right, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I was confused, but yes. Anyway, so thank you.
Okay, all right, good. Getting this done was a particular concern of Commissioner Fuller, so I think a link to the map to Commissioner Fuller would be...
Yeah, we're going to send him a nice gift.
Okay, very good, thank you.
We'll send him a printed copy.
Appreciate that.
He would enjoy a printed copy.
Yes, you're right, very good. All right, thank you for that. The next item would be a report on the meeting with DOT.
Okay, sure. And so we did have a meeting with DOT, I believe, on March 16th, and it included myself, our town engineer David Ryan, Public Works Director Eric Clausen, and Police Chief Phil Webster. And they brought down an entourage of staff, including Win Bridgers, I believe he's the Assistant Division Engineer. We had Jason Davidson, the Traffic Engineer for Division One, and we had Ronnie Sawyer, I believe, he's the Division Maintenance Engineer. And Sterling Baker was unable to attend, but we covered a lot of topics, and, you know, I sent the board prior to the meeting a list of the topics, and then some responses we received in writing after our meeting from DOT. So I think the big one that we covered was the US 158 Mill and Fill project and the schedule for that. And then the other item associated with that was the pavement markings, and that came up with the board last month. I believe several commissioners, Commissioner Cahoon and several others, were very concerned about the condition of the pavement markings, and so we were also able to cover that. And that was probably one of the biggest highlights of productivity from the meeting, was that they have now procured a contract to paint markings prior to Memorial Day this summer. And so obviously, they won't be thermoplastic, but at least it'll be something more visible than what's out there, and hopefully that'll get us to the paving, which hopefully will occur in the next two years and perhaps sooner, but we, something we wanted to talk to the board about. So with the US 158 Mill and Fill project, what we were told is that the contract is broken up into two parts. The first part would be from Eighth Street to Gray Eagle, and that contract would be led in June of 2022, and the contractor would be given 18 months to complete that project, which I think is a fairly standard language for DOT. The portion from Gray Eagle to the causeway over to the bridge would be the second phase. That contract would be led in the spring of 2024, and again, they would be given eight months to complete that project. And they also talked about pipe replacements would be part of this project, so that there's locations identified along 158 where we have drainage corridors crossing the road, and they would go in and do that pipe replacement in advance of the paving and milling work. So that is something that we've been hoping for, for a while. You know, I'm not sure how much of that was done during the last mill and fill, but that should help us with our overall drainage plan. One other item of note related to the paving is that commissioners have been talking about a project down in the Whalebone area to look at some safety improvements. Staff had looked at reconfiguring the intersection where 1243 meets Virginia Dare Trail, and Eric had looked at a design that would reconfigure that intersection, so it would be more of a 90-degree intersection. We would also be looking at having no left turns, but at least at that point, you're not having to look over your shoulder to see oncoming traffic before you make a right turn to go northbound. And then as part of that, we were hoping to realign the crosswalk down to that intersection and maybe even include a tabletop, which would be a traffic calming device. So what we were told in the response we received is that if we were to do a design, then perhaps that could be incorporated with the paving work, and so that is something that hopefully they would be able to do along with the paving work they're going to do out on 158. We did talk about a number of drainage topics, a couple of the projects the board had been looking at regarding stormwater, especially in South Naggs Head. We had two projects in South Naggs Head that we wanted to do to help with flooding on the roadway. These were projects that were designed several years ago. DOT did not commit to any funding for those projects, although given the current grant climate, we were, we had identified grants that we wanted to apply for, for those, that we're looking at doing this fall, and they were certainly supportive of that and working with us on those applications, but they don't have any money identified to commit to that as matching funds. But I think with the grant opportunities that exist, perhaps we can do that through a grant process that wouldn't hit our stormwater capital reserve as much. So regarding other topics, you know, we had talked a little bit about mowing. The DOT has a contract for mowing that covers the town of Naggs Head. Historically, the contractors have come through the town and done the mowing, and not much litter collection in advance of that, and so we sort of expressed that it left things in not the best condition, and so we wanted to see some improvement there. One of the things we had thrown out was whether or not they would be willing to give the town money that we could use to then take the mowing on ourselves, and they do do that in some other divisions. I don't believe they do it in Division One. Their response so far has not mentioned doing that. I know they mentioned that Kildal of Hills was also interested in doing that, so we can follow up on that some more, but for now, they have committed to make sure that their contractors will pick up prior to doing any of the mowing at this point. There's several other things related to pedestrian safety. The push-button sign installation, as the board's aware, the board authorized or approved funds to include a push-button pedestrian sign down here in the village to line up with the new sidewalk that was recently constructed, and that material has been ordered. They're telling us now that it should be in by the end of May, that there was some delay on getting the shipment of materials, but that is their goal, is to complete that installation prior to the end of May, which would complete that project we were looking at to include sidewalks and pedestrian safety for that corridor from, I guess it's Sea Chase eastward.
Andy?
Push-button, there was one at 158, was there also, wasn't there also a push-button at 12?
And that's what I...
So there's two of them?
I'm sure, that, I apologize, that's what I was referring to, is the one on 12.
Okay.
It's the one similar to what's in Whalebone and down at Bonnet Street.
Okay, thank you.
So that's what we're waiting on at this point.
Thank you very much.
So we had been talking about some enhanced crosswalk markings on 12, maybe doing a pilot project to improve the visibility of crosswalks and hopefully the compliance of crosswalks. And as you recall, Eric had presented that last year, and that involved doing some advanced signage and some shark teeth markings with thermoplastic. They sort of said they would help us do that, if we wanted to do that with our forces, they would help us coordinate and educate us on that process. So I think Eric's looking at getting some pricing on that material, and there's a way that we could do that with our own forces if we wanted to try to do some of those locations. So that would basically include buying some thermoplastic templates and some signage. So I think we'll look at moving forward with some locations for that, but that would be done here internally. And let's see. They mentioned ocean outfalls. They are moving forward with ocean outfall work. They have the money in their budget to complete the ocean outfall repairs, and so that work has been scheduled here in the coming months. Let's see. The other thing that we had mentioned that I'll bring up is, for years, there's been this discussion about a, some sort of push-button signal at the event site that would help with traffic control during the events scheduled there. I think our perception, or what we've been told in the past, is that they were not maybe very amenable to that type of treatment, perhaps it didn't meet the warrant. We did not get that sense at this meeting, that they were more open to considering allowing some type of signal there, perhaps a hawk signal, which is a full-blown regulatory signal, it just functions a little bit differently than what you see at Jockey's Ridge. So I had communicated that to the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau after that meeting about funding. Certainly DOT's not going to pay for that, but perhaps there is an opportunity for the Visitors Bureau to budget for that, and I did get some positive response from them on that. So I felt like that was good. We certainly appreciated their willingness to come down and meet with us and cover the topics. They were responsive to some things. I think the main thing that we would like to see different would be the Mill and Fill project being combined into one project and perhaps expedited if possible. It would certainly be nice to have that bid as a 12-month contract instead of an 18-month, and if we were able to combine the two, that would sort of guarantee that it gets done within the next off-season and not the following off-season. So, you know, I know I'd spoken to several board members about the possibility of reaching out to DOT or other folks to sort of see if we can make some progress on expediting that before the contract is let, so we can certainly explore that if the board wants to.
Well, thank you, Andy. And any questions, Andy, but I, in talking with Andy, and I guess there was the same response from many of you, is that if there's no technical reason, if it's moving money from one budget year to another to get the project all packaged as one contract and hopefully get it done faster, I think it would be appropriate for us to go to our legislators and ask them to do that, if that's what it takes. I wanted to know that there was no technical reason why that couldn't be done, and having not heard one, I think we should ask our legislators to see what they can do.
I would agree, because based on the timetable, not just the repaving of 158, but any safety improvements in Whalebone, it sounds like it's like three years away.
Right, it would be.
So, yeah, at a minimum, you're right, but that's kind of putting public safety at a back burner, based on just contractual letting, so I would support your going to legislature.
Okay, all right, good.
I agree, thank you.
Okay. All right, good. Anything else on that, on Andy's report? All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Then that brings us to item K-2, which is approval of the task order with McAdams for ARPA. Then that brings us to item K2, which is approval of the task order with McAdams for ARPA grant assistance.
Yes, good morning again. I guess I've been given all the difficult ones because this is another three-parter. So I'll try to make this as simple as possible. So recently, the town advertised a request for qualification for grant administration services to help town staff with the preparation of upcoming grant opportunities. We had received three separate proposals, one from McAdams, one from iParametrics, and one from the Berkeley Group. We had senior staff go ahead and evaluate the applications and had determined that the team of McAdams, Moffitt and Nickel and Biohabitats was the most qualified. So we had a follow-up meeting with McAdams and representatives from Moffitt and Nickel and Biohabitats to talk about potential grant opportunities. And there were two that were identified, one being the Vista Colony AC Water Main Replacements. This is something that has been submitted into CIP as well as the AMI Smart Metering Program. And so we've identified ARPA funding, which would be available through the Division of Water Infrastructure. They have their spring round of grant applications, which are due May 2nd. And so that is really what has facilitated this request is to move forward with a fee proposal that McAdams has submitted to provide grant assistance in moving forward with the submission of those applications. Okay, so since this funds were not identified for these grant administrative services, we're going to require a budget amendment for it. But also as part of the application process, there is a requirement for adoption of a resolution by the governing, governing body in order to make that grant application. So the three specific requests are the adoption of the resolution by the governing board. Secondly, an adoption of a budget amendment in the amount of $20,000. And then the third request would be authorization for the town manager to move forward with the acceptance of the fee proposal from McAdams in the amount of $20,000.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David before we move, move on these? All right, then let's take them in this order. First, the resolution, that is the resolution authorizing the town manager to execute and file an application on behalf of the town of Nags Head with the state of North Carolina for a loan and/or grant.
Send move.
Have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next would be the budget amendment request, the spreadsheet appearing item in the amount of $20,000.
Send move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And the last would be to authorize the town manager to execute a contract for this item.
Send move.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. That brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I will turn to Commissioner Cafune for a nomination.
Good morning, Mayor. Thank you. As the board is aware, you have received a letter from Coastal Resources Commission asking for nominations to the Coastal Resources Advisory Council. They have a lot of openings. Now that we're meeting back in person, hopefully we can start getting some work done again. Zoom did not work very well for the number of people on that committee. So I'm hopeful that we get some new membership and we start getting some advisory items coming forward. I believe Commissioner Brinkley's got a motion.
Okay, I do. I just, after reading this, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Webb Fuller or that we nominate him to be appointed to this committee and represent us well with his vast experience.
Agreed. I have a motion and a second to nominate former Commissioner Fuller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And as a further note, the Coastal Resources Commission will be meeting in Dare County this month.
Okay, good. Where will they be?
They're, we use the Dare County Board Room. It's got big enough facility. But it will be April 28th. The Advisory Council meets April 27th in the afternoon for our meeting.
Great.
Anyway, open to the public. We encourage anybody that wants to come, please come. But there's a public comment session as well.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate them coming here. Other commissioners' items, Commissioner Sears?
I didn't have an item before today's meeting, even though I thought about it a little bit because I was aware of today's meeting and their public comments. But I would like to ask town manager, has he heard of any intention from Jockey's Ridge to move forward with expanding of a parking lot or increase any activity beyond what we were told at a previous meeting?
I did speak with Joy Greenwood this week. And there is, there is no current plan to do anything at, at the park right now. You know, I know a couple of years ago, there was a sketch circulated. That was before we entered into all, all these meetings with our task force to look at the issues there. I don't think that that plan is still on the table for them. They don't have any funding to do anything, and they don't have any current plans to do anything. And so that's essentially, I believe, that the situation is status quo from our last discussion at the board meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I appreciate the fact that there's been a lot of communication with the superintendent as well as evidently some, there's concern about expansion that people are having. Would it be appropriate to invite the superintendent into a meeting and just have her get an update on the park?
That would be, yes, certainly would be appropriate. But that, that would be a worthy topic for an annual report, not unlike we hear from Nags Head Woods or the Aquarian, you know. So this could be the start of that.
It might open better lines of communication as well as with the public that's not always able to attend our meeting or attend other meetings. But this one would definitely be put out to the public.
Yes, it would be. It'd be very, very beneficial. So thank you. I think that's a great idea.
The people that spoke in reference to Soundside Road, thank them not only for their emails that were read into the record, but also coming out in person. As each of y'all are as well. We were elected by the citizens, and we don't represent the park. We represent the citizens of this community. I would be interested in hearing from staff, any recommendations, whether they recommend a further decrease of the speed limit, any other traffic calming devices, measures on that road. I'd be interested in that. And then increasing traffic enforcement, traffic enforcement, speed enforcement in that area. That's my comment as far as Soundside Road goes. As far as Mr. CC's comments on the, on the village runs, again, I would guess the police department would look into it, and I'd like to hear a recommendation from them as soon as possible about what they plan to do.
Mayor, I've got, may I follow up on that?
Yes.
We don't allow commercial activity at our beach accesses. We do allow events to occur such as the marathon and so forth, which they get a special use permit. But I believe our special use permits have limitations on how often they can be used, including, you can't even have a yard sale at your house except for twice a year. So I'm concerned about an event that is occurring on a weekly basis in a neighborhood on a public street. Are they getting permits from the town to do that? Can anybody answer that question?
Ask the chief to come forward because he, I know Mr. CC, I think indicated he may have spoken to you, but I'm just, this is, this is new to the, a new issue to the board, Sam.
Yes, sir. He and I spoke briefly yesterday, and I thought I was going to get back with him with some information. But we've been doing, or not we, the village royalty has been coming to us for at least two years, if not more, with this racing event that they, that they do. And they come to us for a crowd gathering permit. It's a racing series of eight races that begin in June, run into first two weeks of August, every Thursday. Starts at 7:45 in the morning. And it's an out and back course. It starts on West Sea Chase over by the food line, runs down Lynx, makes the circuit, gets back, gets back on West Sea Chase, and then turns around and comes back, essentially. And, and that's the course. We provide an officer, which they pay for. The, the vendor pays for the officer to be out there.
Are they doing a season under a single crowd gathering permit, or are they getting one every week?
No, sir. There's just one crowd gathering permit that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let me ask perhaps the town manager, is there, is there a policy modification that we need to make? Or is this an interpretation of policy in terms of what we can permit on a public street? In terms of frequency or anything like that?
You know, I'd have to go back and review the ordinance. My, my guess is that it would be some form of a, either an ordinance or policy modification that the ordinance may not, may not speak specifically to how often you can do this type of thing on a street. And, and a portion of this run is on a private street, and then another portion is on a public street.
So the portion that's on the private street is under control of the homeowners association?
That's correct.
Which private street, sir? I'm sorry.
Lynx. Lynx, uh, Lynx Drive.
No, Lynx Drive is a public street.
Lynx Drive is a public street.
Lynx Drive is public.
I thought it was private.
The courts are off of the private where CC lives.
Where they run a Lynx Drive is a, okay.
Yeah, that's a public street.
Right.
Yes, the court, the access.
Courts, yes, but they're.
Where they turn in to go to the condos or the houses, that's private. But Lynx Drive itself is public, and shutting it down every Thursday for two weeks seems rather excessive to me, especially since it's a money-making venture on a town street. You know, it's one thing to do the marathon, which is a community-wide effort, although last year was in Nags Head. But to have something occur every week as a money-making venture on a town street, I just think that's rather excessive.
It is, it is. Common sensically, it is.
Well, they, they don't separate the street. They take the whole street.
Right.
Which is, which makes it difficult.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, I think shutting down the street is wrong.
Yeah, so, so I would ask staff to please look into this as soon as possible and bring back a recommendation for us to rectify this.
And I think issuing special use permits for a whole season, it should be week by week. It shouldn't be a blanket permit.
Right.
I mean, that way it doesn't get reviewed but once, and it just continues on. And nobody knows it until a citizen brings it to our attention.
Right, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for mayor. Mayor, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right. Did I cover, did you have a commissioner's agenda item? Did you speak to that? That was it?
Soundside Road.
Soundside Road. All right, very good.
Village.
All right, thank you. That brings us to the mayor's agenda. And we have two resolutions that we have been asked by our fellow mayors, our fellow towns, to consider. The first is, that's before you, is a Wright Brothers Tribute Museum and Observatory. And rather than read this resolution before we, before we potentially adopt it, this is the site where the current visitor center sits. There have been efforts by the town to support a redevelopment of that site for a museum that would focus on the Wright Brothers. It would be more than a museum. It would also be an educational facility, an entertainment facility. Would still incorporate a visitor center for information the way that the current site does. All of that would occur without public investment, except that the state would have to consent to this being developed in that way. And that essentially is the request, is that we encourage the state to accept that the gift of this facility on their property. And so a, a motion to approve or deny would be in order.
Question for you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this going to be on the site where the Monument of Flight is, or does it impact the visitor center in any way?
It, it, all of that is one site. But it's my understanding that this would occur where the existing visitor center is and that the new facility, which would be a museum, would incorporate a new visitor center, a new state visitor center, restrooms, information area, those same amenities that are there. But it would occur at that location on that site.
The sites adjacent to the restroom facilities and everything that's currently there, correct?
Yes.
So the visitor center would not be impacted. It would still, other than a modification of the building. But I guess I'm a little confused about, would they tear down the current visitor center?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
And who would run, since it's going to be raised by private donations, would the visitor site, which is pretty much the gateway into the Outer Banks, would that still be run by the Visitors Bureau?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know that. And I would be happy to investigate that further before we address this.
That would be my question. I'm not, I support the concept of what's being proposed. I just am concerned about how the private money raising for a private facility would impact the public use of a visitor's, Welcome Center is what it is. It's Acot Brown Welcome Center.
Yes, it is.
Would that change the name of Acot Brown to something else?
What, what was, what I, what I got when I'd asked that question was that sort of like with, with some sports facilities, it would become the Acot Brown Welcome Center in the Wright Brothers Museum. So let's table that one for additional information, which I will go to Kitty Hawk for. The next item then on the agenda is the resolution in support of the Mid-Curtuck Bridge, which it's my understanding the state is proceeding forward with that with the usual legal challenges. And the town of Southern Shore, towns of Southern Shores and Kitty Hawk in particular would like to see that project accomplished sooner rather than later. And we've passed resolutions like this in the past. This is updated language, but it's not unlike previous resolutions that the town of Nags Head has adopted. So the resolution is for the, supporting the construction and its continued inclusion in the state transportation improvement plan.
I'll make a motion to support, but I do have one item for discussion.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. So I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, yes. Commissioner?
Mid-Curtuck County Bridge is important to them. What's important to the town of Nags Head is the Alligator River Bridge. I understand that that may be a project for replacement.
Yes.
I was recently approached by one of our local workers at our business, at a local business that travels every day from Carroll County. And a lot of our workforce comes from that, some of our own towns workforce
They do.
comes from that area. And I think it would be nice if the town could put something together or get information on when this project may happen and in support of that, that would help our town and our businesses out.
It, it would. Thank you. We did do a resolution on that bridge. I'm going to say it was a couple of years ago, maybe, at this point. So I would, I would say in the course of the discussions on the repaving project and while we're in touch with DOT and their representatives, that we do ask about the Alligator River Bridge. And, and perhaps without regard to the answer that we get, that we were. And perhaps, without regard to the answer that we get, that we renew our resolution in support of that bridge, along with the support of our sister communities for that effort. That's fair, fair exchange.
Thank you for that.
Yep, all right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second in support of the Mid-Curtuck Bridge project. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. Before we go to closed session, let's go ahead and ask, is there any other business to come before the board? And there may be, depending, I suppose, on what we do here and what the timetable is. So maybe I'll defer that. So that would, that would bring us then to the closed session items, Joan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the board needs a motion to enter closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a3, in order to consult with the town attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege, including regarding the case of the town versus 205 Baltic LLC and the Cherry Inc. Oceanfront House located at 10-211 East Seagull Drive.
Thank you. All right, so you've heard, a motion to that effect would be in order.
Make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session. All right, the board has returned to open session. Mr. Whitey, will you please report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the board did give instructions to the town attorneys during the closed session, but nothing else needs to be reported at this time.
Okay, very good, thank you. Now it's time for us to recess to the Budget/CIP workshop. It is quarter to one. How's two o'clock? Okay, all right, then the board will recess until two o'clock.